Good evening. I'd like to open the open session board meeting at 6:34 PM. And I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'm a little off right here. I'd like to invite principal from Monroe Elementary School Amanda Noriega to bring her students up for the pledge allegiance this evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Board President Travanti, School Board Superintendent Smith. I am Amanda Noriega. I'm the proud principal of Monroe Elementary School, and I have three of our wonderful students here today. This is Isabella Villegas, come on up, Kennedy Valdez, and Adrian Pedrosa. They're going to lead us in this flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Can we please all stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Please stand. And now we'll do it in Spanish. Yo prometo la lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América, la república que representa una nación bajo Dios indivisible con libertad y justicia para todos. You may sit now. The reason we have this, we, okay, we just opened this anti-bullying club. The reason we have it is so we can make everybody feel comfortable and everybody feel safe to stop and to stop bullying. Earlier today, we had a little assembly to represent what our club does to help our school. We showed them, um, we showed them that blow of like if you're being which is a still picture to send a message of bullying of what to do and what not to do.
So they had their assembly today that we partnered with Laco, with, um, with another school district, and we did some TEAL training. And so part of that training that we incorporated some of those strategies to bring the arts, to bring English language development and the anti-bullying that the students started at school. And so we had a tableau assembly to show all of our students what it's, what the examples and non-examples of bullying. So I'm very proud of these students today because they wanted to do it. There's over 40 students that are in the club. And all of a sudden, after our assembly, a lot more want to be in it. So I'm very proud of them, and so thank you very much.
Thank you. And before you go, before you go, we'd like to take a picture with you. And I'd also like to add, it is not easy to get up here and talk in front of some adults here that are strangers to you. You guys did a fantastic job. Thank you. And in Spanish. Thank you. We'll move on to roll call, and I will note that all board members are present. Dr. Ryan Smith is present, Dr. Sue Kaiser, Dr. Jackson, and Charles Provacian, as well as our student school board member, Brianna Campbell. Thanks for being here. Dr. Smith, is there a change in the order of the agenda or any changes?
There is not, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting on October 13th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
You have a motion in a second. Ms. Huff, can you call roll, please?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Golar?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Under Communications, Board Member Report, Ms. Lockerbie.
Thank you, Madam President. This past weekend, Girl Scout Troop 2851 finished a lengthy service project that they had been working on for a while, and it was cementing file marker posts onto a popular trail here in our local mountains from the Ridgely Gate to Sunset Bench. The girls had to collaborate, they had to communicate, they had to shop, do like construction shopping for materials. But what gave me the most joy? Well, the dog, probably, meeting that dog on the trail probably gave us all the most joy. But what was so rewarding about watching these girls, all of them MUSD students or MUSD alums, was watching them math. And they had to measure and extrapolate and mix and discuss angles and do every sort of math that there is in the practical world. And they did it so wonderfully and so collaboratively. And it was really impressive to be able to not only see them do this work, but see them have this epiphany and have all of this, this math training that they have been given for all of these years sort of really gel in a wonderful way. So I just wanted to share that experience that I was able to have with some of our MUSD students and also wanted to thank the Hillside Wilderness Reserve for allowing us to do the work there. That ends my board report very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lockerbie. And Ms. Golar? Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. Thank you. This afternoon, I had the pleasure in joining Board President Travanti and Dr. Smith in helping to unveil the new Monrovia Reads Literacy Van in Monrovia Park. Our Monrovia Literacy Van serves all of our Monrovia schools thanks to Monrovia Reads and many, many community foundations that help support this activity. It not only checks out books, but it also helps to issue library cards. After a number of years with our old van, which was starting to fail in February 2020, Monrovia Reads announced that they had received a grant to support a new electric vehicle, which we are just now seeing, obviously, because of the pandemic. This new van will help reach children and throughout our district at least every month for every site. And they can continue the good work of sharing reading and a love of books throughout Monrovia. So we thank not only Monrovia Reads and our community partners, as well as the city, but thank you, Dr. Smith, and Board President Travanti for being there to help, not support, but celebrate, but the, I'm blanking on the word, to yes, to kick off the launch of our new electric van. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Appreciate that. And I think that I have a report here, and I'd like to talk a little bit. And Brianna Campbell, I'm about to embarrass you a little bit, but it's, it's important that our community know what a great job that our student school board members did recently. Brianna Campbell and Alexa Holt were interviewed as part of the California School News Radio featuring our two student school board members. They did a fantastic job. It's about a 30-minute interview. They really didn't know what was coming at them. So I'd have to say they did a fantastic job. And the Monrovia Unified School District social media did push it out. So if you want to hear what they have to say, it was really interesting to hear what's going on at their schools, but also what's going on in their own lives, the challenges that they're having, and also what their future aspirations are. So I learned a lot about both of them. So thank you for participating in that. And that concludes our, our reports for board members, and we'll move on to Brianna Campbell.
Good evening, President Travanti, members of the board, Dr. Smith, members of cabinet, friends and families of Monrovia community. I am pleased to report that Mountain Park School is soon going to have a Paxton Peterson lab installed in our science classrooms. These labs will help students prepare for their workforce by teaching important skills and providing knowledge that we need to know as we prepare to select a career path. We know that pretty soon we will have to learn to live by ourselves. So we know that more we learn, the more we can earn. Our school purchased the labs with CSI grant money to help students be more prepared for college and career by learning STEM and learning systems, health, science careers, and construction and maintaining building skills. We anticipate that these skills will be installed in the next month so that students can immediately begin to ignite their passion for learning and earning. This is my report for October. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Appreciate it. And we'll move on to the superintendent report.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Good evening, board members, cabinet, members of the community and public. Just a few things to update you on. One, I'd like to share some really neat news. Monroe Elementary School's PTA really can bring it. They raised almost $26,000, I believe, through their annual Jog-a-thon efforts, which is nothing short of fantastic. And I'd like to thank the PTA there from the bottom of my heart for all that they do to support the school. I was actually over there today for a visit, and I saw the PTA parents there helping out, lending a hand, conducting some activities for Red Ribbon Week. That was fantastic. And so so grateful to have their support and for all that they do to the school. This picture that you happen to see is Principal Noriega, who, you know, we heard from a little bit earlier in our meeting. I guess for meeting a particular fundraising goal, she had to turn herself into a human sundae by sliding down that slip and slide into whipped cream and chocolate and nuts and the whole nine. So she's a real trooper. So thank you, Ms. Noriega, and congrats to the students and PTA and the staff, everybody that helped make that possible. I also had the opportunity to stop by and visit our high school, Monrovia High School, with Dr. Kaiser and Mr. McGinnis. And I wanted to share this picture. What you're seeing here is a picture of what's called a Socratic seminar. And a Socratic seminar is a fantastic learning technique where students essentially get into two circles. An inner circle that debates themes around a particular novel, reading, or something that they're studying. And then the outer circle takes notes along the way and advises the inner circle, and there's a chance for them to collaborate. In this particular Socratic seminar, they were going through a reading in themes related to the novel Animal Farm. And I didn't want to leave. In fact, we didn't leave. We just finished that whole period and stayed there for about a good 20 minutes. The discussion was fantastic. And I'd really like to thank Ms. Suava Stingle for facilitating that, like an absolute pro. Just a fantastic experience and a great learning activity for our students. I was so, so impressed, and I wanted to share that with everyone tonight. I'd also like to mention that I have become a Rotarian. So the other day, I received officially my red badge, which is, I guess, the beginner badge. And I have some tasks to complete before I become a blue badge member of Rotary. But such a special moment. I've really enjoyed getting to know the Monrovia Rotary Club, and it's a real honor to be a part of it. And I would like to thank the Rotary Club, A, for accepting me, but also, B, for all of the tremendous work that they do to support our schools, but also our community. It truly is a fantastic organization. I'd also like to thank my sponsor, Board President Travanti, for her leadership and guidance along the way through this process. I'm really proud, and I'm wearing my Rotary pin here on my lapel. And so just wanted to know I am representing this evening. Last thing, and there is no slide for this one. I do have to give a shout out to the Monrovia Wildcat Football Team, who is a fantastic and perfect 9-0, coming off a 55-6 sound win against Temple City last week. They go into their, they go into their final game of, game of the regular season on Thursday, not Friday, Thursday night at 7:00 at home against South Pasadena. I believe it's a neon game, so everybody's supposed to break out the neon from the 80s, I guess, if anybody has that left over. Regardless, even if you don't, please come on out and support our team as they wrap up the regular season and hopefully head into the playoffs and make a serious title run. So congratulations to our team and the coaches in the school. And that concludes my board report.
Great report. Lots of great things happening. Thank you, Dr. Smith. We will move on to the public comment section. I will go ahead and read the instructions since we do have a new process that went into effect last meeting. In accordance with AB 361, members of the public may provide live public comment by clicking and registering the link that is on the agenda. Once you have registered, you will receive a link to join the meeting via the email you used to register. During the public comment section of the meeting, you will be prompted to unmute your microphone. At that time, please state your name, identify whether or not your comment is for an open or closed session agenda item. You may then give your live public comment. And in order to accomplish board business in a timely and efficient manner, public input is limited to no more than three minutes per person, totally no more than 20 minutes per topic or agenda item. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we currently have Karen Suarez. Karen Suarez, you will be allowed to talk.
And thank you, Ms. Suarez. Go ahead. Is this a, an agenda item or non-agenda?
Non-agenda, non-agenda for the open public.
Great. Okay, thank you, Ms. Suarez. Go ahead.
I'll set my timer. Thank you, Board Member Travanti and volunteer board members. I really appreciate your service and the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Karen Suarez, and I'm a resident of Monrovia. I am representing the California Native Plant Society this evening, the San Gabriel Mountains Chapter. It's one of 30 chapters in California, and it's nationally recognized. Every year, the Native Plant Society has a plant sale, and usually it's held at Eaton Canyon Nature Center in Pasadena. Due to COVID, we did not have a plant sale last year. And so we held an art contest and rebranded a beautiful T-shirt and worked on a lot of internal issues, including talking about diversity in our organization. And my phone just went off. There it goes. So anyways, about the plant sale. It's going to be in Monrovia this year, and it's at the Historical Museum on Lemon Avenue, which is 742 East Lemon Avenue, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I'd like to invite you all to come. There's going to be 2,000 plants for sale. 50 cents a plant sold goes to the Monrovia Canyon Park Volunteer Fund. And so that's all the more reason to come. I would also like to invite students to come and participate, especially in the science programs, but anybody can come and learn about plants. I think native plants are very important for everybody to learn about. We do offer scholarships, and if you're interested in botany, this is a great opportunity to come and have a learning experience. If you want to just come and hang out and learn, come buy some plants, volunteer. You can go to the website, which is cnps-sgm.org. And there's a full list of the plants there for sale and more information about the plant sale. Love to really shout out thanks to the city staff in Monrovia. Tina Cherry has really been very accommodating. City manager Dylan Pike has been putting the information about the sale in his city manager report. So again, November 6, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Please come to the native plant sale. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Suarez. I appreciate the information, and we'll get it out there. Okay, thank you. And next public comment, please. State your name.
Yes, our next public comment comes from Mr. Dave Hart. Mr. Dave Hart, you will be allowed to talk.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hart?
Hello, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just want to say hello from Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School. And if your meeting ends soon enough, you can go to a Chipotle fundraiser for Santa Fe and also to Muya for a Wildrose fundraiser, since I've got vested interest in both. And then I would also like to invite all of you to mark down December the 9th on your calendars for our winter concert, always an exciting and opportunity time. I know Mr. Travanti, Mr. Hammond, a number of you have all attended that, and it's a good thing to do. And we have had on occasion, had the opportunity, Santa does show up. So we would like to invite you to that. Please come. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. And yes, we have definitely enjoyed the winter concert at Santa Fe in the past and look forward to it this year as well. Thank you. Next public comment?
There are no other public comments.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the section of public comment section for this meeting and move on to information reports. Monrovia Community Adult School Update by Principal and Director Flint Furtig. Welcome.
Am I good? Okay. It's always fun to report about the Monrovia Community Adult School and the changes of any program that I've ever worked with in my career. Nothing changes faster, and nothing changes more than the adult programs. So for our agenda tonight, I want to make sure that we're updating the board and keeping the address of the changes. And so every year, as we do put this together, we do the best we can to kind of look at the impending legislation, which many of you are aware, has changed a lot just during the pandemic year, our funding sources, which tend to change a little bit, and then the programs, which we offer as the state kind of puts together their research. So coming back after the COVID pandemic, we want to tell you that we are, have curriculum and the structural delivery modes that have changed a little bit. We want to talk about our comparative enrollments for years past versus right now as we're coming back with in-person learning. We want to talk about our overview of our funding sources and our expenditures that we have. We want to talk about the Citrus College Adult Ed Consortium and update you on its progress, of which we are one of these seven members. Talk about student demographic and performance data, and also our AJCC funding and our marketing that we have to do in order to make sure that we're reaching the right populations that the state asks us to serve. Next slide talks about a comparative enrollment, and we took three years. And what I want you to understand is, as you look at those three years, the last year on the right is only in the month of November, almost. So we have a lot of growth. And by the end of the year, we fully expect, looking at the numbers and the projections that we have, to be very close to where we were pre-pandemic. And that's a good thing. You can see the decline. 1920, we missed half the year, had to go virtual, and it did hit us. We were over 2,000 the year prior, went total to 1718. During the pandemic year, we served 841. This year already, we're at 1167. You can look at each of the different comparable programs. Our ESL program, English as a Second Language, 375 to 78, that was a population that was very worried about the pandemic. And virtually, English as a Second Language is very difficult to accomplish. And I think they understood that, and our numbers across the state dropped. But we're very excited to report that our program has bounced back. We have 167 students who are actively coming to campus, and we expect by the end of the year for that number to grow as people kind of talk to their neighbors and friends and as we market to that population. Our academic program, interestingly enough, a lot of people decided to go back to school and get their diploma. And this year, we suddenly had a lot of people. A lot of that has to do with the personalities of our diploma program. Our teachers are out in the community and very visible, and they meet and promote our program very, very well. And if you know Mr. Wu and Mr. Ross, that's who they are. And so it's funny, they, they get out in their respective circles of friends, and we believe that that's been a big part of some of that growth there. And we expect to have a very large graduation of diploma recipients this year because of that growth. Our career technical education has grown quite a bit. And it's hard to have a pandemic CTE program because your nurses, your construction workers, your pharmacy technicians, you know, a lot of them were kept out of hospitals. They couldn't do internships, they couldn't go to job sites. So we really, really couldn't graduate people with those certifications. But now that we're back, as you can see, we're almost back to pre-pandemic levels. We should serve about 500 CTE people in a year. We have new programs that'll be starting up here after Thanksgiving in all three of our nursing programs and pharmacy tech. It should continue to grow those numbers. And construction doesn't even start because that's when the union halls partner with us and when the OSHA certification programs start. So that won't even start until after Thanksgiving. We should have a very strong construction program. And we've really pushed for A-plus certification cybersecurity programs as well. And it looks like we might have enough signups for that to work. We're looking at some partnerships in the community and with former colleges and higher institutions that we've worked with in the past. Very excited for those programs. Workforce preparation, people who are just coming in, looking for jobs, trying to get their skills, interviews and such up. We're all the way up at 278. That is a direct result, I believe, of the pandemic, and a lot of people who are off work, looking to improve their situation and get either a better job or employment. Community classes, the fun ones, all of our ceramics and stuff, because once again, we're back, suddenly we have quite a few people lining up for those programs. As you're well aware, those are institutions in our community, and our, our community members love those. The next slide. We have some of our programs that are in person and some that are virtual. And I want to kind of outline that, just so that if you get questions in the community, you're able to, to understand that, because a lot of people do come to us and go, what's virtual? What's? So in person right now, we have ESL, medical assisting, certified nursing, pharmacy technician, security, our academic or high school diploma program, and our adult basic education. Our virtual programs right now are personal finance, accounting, life skills, and we also have academic courses available virtually through our edgenuity program and through some of the virtual platforms that some of our teachers have created themselves to allow students to interact in that direction. So we are still serving constituents in the Monrovia and surrounding areas who are nervous about coming back in person with those programs. Our funding. Our funding is strong, and the reason it's strong, I have to say, is because we meet outcomes. The district, as you're well aware, gives us an allocation of $250,000, but our entire budget is about $2,700,000. And you ask, where does the other 2.5 million come from? It comes from the fact that we're able to meet outcomes, we're able to get grants, we're able to have people who will bring money to the table to have certain populations educated. We broke that down for you. There's a 231-243 Worst Force Investment and Opportunity Act grant that is for a total of $223,151. And that's a grant that we work closely And that's a grant that we work closely with the district office. Every time one of those reports comes due, Dr. Smith checks in with us and says, you need anything from me? Can you get this? We're good. But those reports are important because they show that we have results that allow that funding to keep coming. If we don't get those results, that funding goes away. So that's a very real thing, where every day we look at our numbers, we look at our outcomes, people that are advancing in their English, people that are getting their citizenship, and people that are transitioning from those programs into the workforce. Those outcomes are very important to our state and the federal government, and that's how that funding continues to stream to us. We have CalWorks Grant. Usually that is for parents who have young children who are in lower socioeconomic status. If they come to us and need training, we're able to build back that grant if we provide the training and get the outcomes. If they come and take the training and don't get a job, or come and take the training and don't meet certain benchmarks, we don't get that funding. But if they come, we can get that funding. Our fees, we estimate fees, about $300,000 come to us in fees. What's great about those fees is most of those fees are taken care of by government agencies for the students and clients that we serve. We have to market very carefully to populations that the state tells us to serve, and we do that very well through our marketing. And those people come in the door, and depending where the funding is, be it veterans, be it people who are of second language, or be it people who were on COVID relief dollars for quite a certain amount of time, we're able to market to those families and those people and bring them in so that they can improve their lot in life. And we're able to get funding from the state and the federal government because of that, and a lot of that comes in the form of fees. And if you ever see Mr. Russell, and he's pulling his hair out and driving all over the state picking up checks, that's sort of what he does. We have a healthy carryover of $541,000. Our carryover is not normally that large, but it is large this year because our expenditures were lighter due to COVID. We have that money pretty much spent this year, but it is there, and it is still earmarked for the sources for which it was originally given to us. But we have a lot of that money that did carryover, came to us from CTE, and we will be using it to upgrade some of our facilities and labs and also to work with some of our partners to market, to bring in the correct populations so we can continue to have vibrant and strong programs. So that gives us a balance, a healthy balance. It's always nice when we're able to meet with Mr. Conway and show him that we have a healthy balance and a healthy carryover. And we do appreciate the trust that the board and this district and has always given us to kind of run with this budget. I understand it's not an easy thing to do, to go, wait, we're only giving you $250,000, and you say you're going to spend 2.7 million. But I think in the 14 years I've worked with you, Mr. Conway, we've never missed. It's always been a healthy carryover, and we're able to do it. Appreciate that support and appreciate the chance to continue to serve our community. We love what we do there. So the programs that we have, just there, there's a few that are strong. We want you to make sure that you understand and you're able to share these with our community. We have medical assistant, pharmacy tech, video production. We have automotive. We have construction, computer skills, certified nursing, job development, security. We have a concurrent night and a summer school that we, where we offer academic programs. And because of the extra money that we get from here and from the state, we are able to offer that to high school kids quite a bit. One of the things people don't know about the adult schools, we probably have about 400 to 500 high school kids who are able to earn credits of classes where they got a D or an F, and they're able to retake those courses, and it really is a helpful thing in our district for our graduation rates and to give kids a chance. And it also is a great chance for us to get acquainted with that population, those kids, so that later on, they know where to go, but they want to take some of these job skills or learn. And of course, we have adult basic education for anybody who wants to come in and brush up on anything. We had a person who was a doctor in the Philippines just the other day, and he walked in, and he was taking basic English with our ABE. It's amazing to listen to his stories, and he is a very highly educated man, and yet humble enough to go, no, I need to come here and learn basic English despite my, you know, 14 years of college and surgery, surgical training in the Philippines. And so we're always humbled by the people we get to serve. Classes for immigrants and English language learners, our ESL program we talked about, and citizenship, and then our community courses. The state wanted us to do a personal accounting and finance, and we do that through Mr. Joe Croft. Many of you have met him. He is an accountant and auditor, and a very proficient one who kind of just likes us, I think. That's the only reason he comes and teaches some night classes and helps us with some of our bookkeeping and such. But he did a phenomenal summer program where he had virtual classes for anybody in Monrovia who wanted to attend, talking about financial responsibility, and we got a lot of compliments about that program, helping people in our community kind of better shore up their own finances. It was really kind of a neat thing. Monrovia Adult School is one of seven members of the Citrus College Adult Education Consortium. And sometimes that's, people get us confused, like you're part of Citrus, but you're not. When the adult education funding was sort of removed from the K-12 system and it came through in a stream that starts with the community college, we thought, wow, this is going to be interesting. We'll see how we fare here. But Citrus College has been a fantastic partner for us. And starting with Joanne Montgomery, who was our board member, Mary Ann Lutz is our board member now from this area. Both of them have been very attentive to the needs of our school and our community, and both of them are very aware of our school and our community. And we were so grateful for Mary Ann's service now and Joanne's service in the past. Because Monrovia is always, we get a call when things get weird. We get a call quickly, like, okay, how does this work for our city? How is this going to work? And they're very in tune with us, and we sure appreciate that Citrus has been a fantastic partner. They didn't try to take extra money or anything. If anything, we got more than they did, so that was good. The consortium has major plans or goals this year that we need to be attentive to. They need to increase outcomes from online delivery of consortium educational services. So we understood that, and we immediately got the first thing about personal finance and fiscal solvency within the families in our community, and we were able to meet that quickly. We were able to show our enrollment for that. That was great. They also want to see the enrollment specifically in CTE, and they want to see job placement. So we've worked very closely with our district office. We've talked to the curriculum department quite a bit about how we have kind of sharpened this, sharpened the saw a little bit there with our CTE programs. And we have about a 90% to 95% pass rate across the board in our CTE programs, and we have a very high job placement rate. We can be proud in this community that we are able to do that. But we still want to increase it, because if we increase it, it means more money because better outcomes. We want to work to increase access to the employment outcomes from in-person and virtual career technical education. And we're doing our best right now to, any way we can, market to the populations who need us to get them in the door. Still to this day, we have people who walk in off the street and say, we had no idea you were here. We had no idea this place existed, and we think, how could you not know? But then I realize I work there every day. I meet so many people who do know about us. But the reality is, there are still people in our community or people who've moved in who just don't know we're here. So we've done everything we can with our catalog, our door-to-door marketing. We've also really pushed the virtual marketing. That's been our biggest positive gain. If you guys see pop-ups, sorry, that have our thing, it's because you're tied to us some way. If you Google anything remotely about any training in this area, we'll hit your spam quite a bit. But that has helped us, and we appreciate your patience as we continue to reach a population that does need us, that we can help with the funding and the things that we have for them. Another area that we have to address as a consortium is we have to improve consortium student transition to post-secondary education. Citrus has funded a position that is a counselor who is going to be on our campus two days a week, on Azusa's campus one day a week, and Claremont's one day a week, and I believe Glendora's the other day. So we got him for two, and I think that's just because everyone's afraid of Mr. Russell. That's all I can figure, because they gave us two days. They're not afraid of me anymore, that's for sure. But when we got that, we were very excited. And the reason why is he's there to now work with our adult students. Mostly people who come to a community college are kind of a little prepared for the big vastness and the craziness of a community college. Adult Eds are much smaller. They're much more intimate. And sometimes those students come to us because they're not ready for the big vastness and the chaos of a college setting. So we're always grateful to help transition them. We actually took a bus the other day with a bunch of the city bus, rode all the way down there and got Mr. Russell to hop out, and he walked them around the campus, introduced them to their spots. And what a neat day that was for them. They all came back super excited as they're going to be enrolling. And we're grateful for the membership in the consortium and the opportunity we have to help people change their lives with that. The consortium funding, just so you know, is 4.4 million, 4.413282 for all six members. There's a seventh member that's a library in Azusa that's not funded. So there's seven members, but six of us that receive funding. And Monrovia continues to provide administrative expertise in many ways. When we write the annual plan for the state, it's really written by our site, overseen by Dr. Kaiser, to look at those details and make sure that that's in a good form. They've asked us this year at the state convention for adult ed to present our annual plan and to be, to give everybody else a little help in writing theirs. So that'll be interesting because we've done that now for four years in a row, and they've asked Mr. Russell and even Mr. McKendrick at times to be part of those types of things because of their expertise and grateful to work with those folks. So that concludes my report. Any questions about adult ed or anything else that, as we serve this area?
Thank you, Mr. Furtig, for this wonderful report, and I will open it up to board members for any questions or comments. Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Furtig, thank you very much for your report. I have a couple of questions. The first one, you mentioned the A-plus certification for cybersecurity, but I didn't quite see it on here. And so I'm wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about that?
I sure can. We've had A-plus and we've had cybersecurity in the past. We had a wonderful partnership. Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, about three years ago, maybe two years prior to that, we had a partnership that was board-approved with Pacific College. And it was an exceptional partnership because our students could get their, the equivalent of two years of college on the adult ed campus. And we actually had kids from Monrovia High School who went through that program, and we had kids from Canyon, two of them, who went through that program, and then a few adults. And then they transitioned from there to Pacific College as juniors, looking to get their bachelor's degree in cybersecurity. Now, if they had stopped with the two-year degree, that's okay. There's still high-paying jobs at that level. But many of them went on further. That partnership was a great partnership, but then Pacific College had some situations where they had to pull that program back. And when they did that, I remember, you know, Mr. Russell and Dr. Kaiser, and I were like, oh, we love this program. But now they and another college in the area, and I want to make sure I say the right, I think Cypress Community College. And I don't quote, I think that's the right one. It's in the area, in Orange County there, are looking to do this again. And they've reached out to us because we had such successful, a cohort, two cohorts actually that went through. And they had just finished up with some of the kids from MHS who'd now gotten, you know, jobs, and it's really just been a fantastic partnership. So we're working with them again, and we want this to work. But what we really need to do is we really kind of need them to sort of fix a couple things. COVID really changed a lot of things, and so a lot of people missed deadlines in getting courses approved at the state level to where their program could work, and through no fault of their own. So we're waiting for them to kind of catch up for what they missed, and as soon as they're caught up, they're going to partner with both us and a school, I think, out in Riverside they've talked about. And they want to address both of us, and we'll be in meetings. And the moment we start moving with that, Dr. Kaiser and I will put together an informational piece where we'll get that information to you so that you can be aware of it. A-plus certification is a precursor for that. You can use just A-plus. And right now, we're looking for an A-plus teacher because Anthony Carlson at the high school, super busy this year. Anyone who knows Anthony, you never see him not running around wiring something together. But he's unable to do our night class that he did in A-plus certification, so we're going to have to find another instructor. We love Anthony, and he'll be back, but this year, I think he just had a little too much on his plate, but we still have signups for that. And interestingly enough, we got funding from one of the AJCCs for that. So we have probably about eight or nine spots that can be completely funded, and so that's a great program, great program. So both of those, did that answer your question?
I think so. Do we have sort of a, an estimate of when we might see that, or is that too dependent on other?
I thought we'd see it by now, a couple of months ago. So it really is, we're pushing them to get it because we want it. And I know the school in Riverside that does what we do wants it as well. We've talked to them. They're actually in Hemet, not Riverside. I'm glad my brain just picked in. The school's in Hemet that did this was a partnership with them. But we are hoping that they get that done. As soon as they have their courses approved and they're ready to go, then we'll go through the process of looking at how we need to align our stuff to theirs, and then, of course, bring it to our board and our cabinet for approval. So that's the plan. But yeah, those are, those are not on the list, even though we have them. No, no, A-plus certification, we can have at any time. We don't need that partnership. But in order for it to really have the bang for its buck and allow them to transfer the college credits to either Cypress or to Pacific College, we'll need to wait for them to get their courses reapproved. As soon as that's done, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
And then is there, can you tell me how we help inform our students who may need to repeat classes at our adult school? Our, you know, the Monrovia High School students, because I'm assuming that Mountain Park and Canyon probably have an inside information being on the same campus.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not more, we probably get more kids from MHS, to be honest. And so what happens, it's done through counseling. And what will happen is we'll have a little bit of funding left over, and we'll say, we have an evening program. And that evening program, because we can't use a lot of our other funding for anyone under the age of 18. Anyone who's 18 can walk in and take that class anytime. That's what the funding's for. We get reimbursed for them. But if you're 17 or 16, we have to wait until we have some extra money that's in a category that can be spent on the under. So for example, when we get a little bit of carryover, we'll look at that carryover, we'll see, did that come in from, you know, either fees? 910 is that category, or did it come in from the $250,000 the district originally gave us? And if there's like $28,000 left over in that category, we can spend that on services for our students. And we usually immediately, we had a really robust summer school this year, apart from some of our CSI funding from Canyon, but also because of some of this. So we, I want to say we served, it felt like, at least 300 or 400 kids, and I would say 200 of them probably came to us from the high school. Now, a lot of them were just for one semester, five class, five units. Tracy's, now you remember this, we used to sit in meetings and decide who would fit where in the wild west of summer school.
Great, thank you. That helps clear it up. And I didn't mean to imply that the MHS kids were not getting their due. It was just that, because they're on the same campus, it might be easier to share information out. So that's done through counseling so that if any student has the opportunity, they, they're made aware of it through their counselor.
Yeah, they might not even see it as an opportunity. The counselors call them in and say, look, you got this grade, and for your goals to be met, you need to be here. Then the counselor gives us the forms all filled out, and we just expect the kid to show up Tuesday nights and see Mr. Ross or Mr. Wu, and we take care of them from there.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Hammond, are you good?
I'm good.
Over here.
Well, before you leave the podium, I do want to mention that I've been to several of the graduations now, and I, I can't go without commenting on those graduations because they are really special.
Aren't they?
If they've graduated from the GED program, they're wearing their cap and gown proudly. If they've graduated from one of the nursing programs, they're wearing their scrubs possibly, they're getting their pins, their official pins. If they're farm techs, they're wearing their lab coats in graduation. I mean, it's truly a great sight to see, and it's really special.
And everybody's crying.
And everybody's crying, everybody's crying, including yours truly.
Special place.
And one thing that just sticks out for me this last year, seeing some single parents with babies or toddlers in the car seat, in the car. Mom gets down, or dad gets down, walks, gets their diploma or certificate, and John Russell jumping in the car to move the car ahead. But there's this toddler just kind of staring out the window, but they're witnessing their parents getting these certificates, getting these diplomas, and creating a better life for them. And that, I just had to mention that because you all do a wonderful job there with that.
Thank you. It's an honor. My wife doesn't believe I even work. She just keeps going. It's not fair. You go to where you love to be, and it's true. It's an amazing place, and it's special.
Right, thank you for your report.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Okay, we'll move on to the seabeds, the Census Day Enrollment and Unduplicated Student Count Report. Mr. Conway? Welcome.
Hello, is this still, is this still on? Okay.
Yes.
Board President Vonte, School Board, Dr. Smith, Cabinet, Monrovia Community. I'm here to present a report regarding this year's student enrollment. Census Day every year is the first Wednesday in October. That's the day that all these public schools in the state... That's the day that all these public schools in the state report their enrollment numbers to the state as a snapshot in time and it's the official number that's used to improve, to put into their database and to ours of how many students we have this year. It's also known as Cbeds Day, California Basic Education Data System, is the data system on the CD, California Department of Education website that includes all of this For this year's Cbeds Day Census Day Enrollment, our unofficial Census Day Enrollment was That compares to a projection that we made when the school, in the adopted budget in June of 5,144. So we're 10 down from the original projection that we made. That is 113 down or 113 fewer students than we had last year on Census Day. And last year, we had 5,247 students. That is a 2.15% decline from last year. That, that number of students this year is a different mix of schools than it was in prior years. As you can imagine, independent study this year is greatly increased from last year, which was greatly increased from the year before due to a lot of parents, I think, reluctance to send their kids to in-person learning. So we're lucky here in Monrovia, we have a robust independent study program, thanks to Flint Furtig and his team. And that program was already up and running and doing great work before COVID. And we were, they were able to pick up a lot of students that, again, were reluctant probably to go to regular school last year and this year. So you can see the regular school enrollment is down 203. Alternative education is up 115. Alternative education is Mountain Park and Canyon Oaks. They're a slightly different model than our other schools are. Special education is also down this year. Both special education SDC students in individual classrooms and our non-public school students are both down a little bit this year. That's included in the overall 113 fewer students. Have not analyzed yet what that means for expenditures. Having fewer non-public school students probably will save the district money, but we haven't analyzed that number yet. The other piece of this to keep in mind is we're down 10 from projection, but we're down quite a bit more than usual last year in kindergarten. Our kindergarten last year was smaller than usual. The hope and the expectation was that that might have been parents that did not send their children to school, virtual school, Zoom school for the 2020, 21 school year when it was determined that that would all be done virtually and nothing in person. And sure enough, this year's kindergarten jumped right back up to the average it was before. It was 335 last year, it's 386 this year, which is, as I said, what it's been averaging for the last five or six years. But the 335 kindergarten students last year, that turns out, maybe it was not related to COVID because first grade this year is down 20 from last year and down 40, 37 from, or actually, yeah, 47 from the year before, 2019, 20. So those 335 kindergarten students, very few of them that were missing, if you want to say missing, came into first grade this year. So the, it appears it happened to be a small cohort of kindergarten students that was maybe exacerbated a little bit by the COVID pandemic. The reason I bring that up is that kindergarten last year, first grade this year, will continue to bubble through a second, third, continue to bubble through all the way to 12th grade and have small classes for that grade compared to the other grades. And that will impact future enrollment as well. I'm still projecting that our enrollment will continue to decline. We have declined every year except one since 1999, 2000. And in 1990, 2000, we peaked at 6,752 enrollment. And now we're down to 5,134. And it's likely, unless our kindergartens start to get bigger again, that that will decline will continue for a number of years into the 2020 year, 2020 decade. The reason for that decline is, as I said, kindergarten enrollment. In the 90s, we had 500 kindergarteners in a lot of years. In the 2000s, we had over 400. We've been averaging just under 400 for the last five or six years. So that has a direct impact on enrollment going forward. As you know, our enrollment is, our attendance at school is a big driver of our revenue for our main revenue for the local control funding formula and for our smaller sources of revenue like lottery and a lot of the specialized programs. They look at our attendance and our attendance is directly tied to how many students we have. If we have 5,134 students this year and 5,247 last year, we're obviously going to have fewer students in attendance and fewer students to generate revenue for us. So that's the reason enrollment and attendance is such an important factor in budgeting our, budgeting our revenue and budgeting our teacher count and budgeting our expenditures. And that is my report. Do you guys, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Any questions or comments? Or Mr. Conway, Mr. Hammond?
Thank you for the report. One question, have we looked at any neighboring districts? And let's say from, oh, Lockinada area all the way out to Upland? Has anybody experienced an increase in enrollment? Is everybody flat or is everybody declining? And have we done that work?
Anecdotally, from all the districts that I know of, they are all in decline. They occasionally have a small increase, but they're, they've all been declining pretty routinely for many years. I have not done a formal survey of many surrounding districts, but we can do that.
I would think that probably useful information to see if anybody is having an increase in enrollment. I know the fact that the gentrification of our community because of the rising price of real estate and rent and everything else has made it so it's been very difficult for families, particularly beginning families, to be able to locate here, which would be a driving force behind the decline in kindergarten. Also with our community aging, you're less likely to have children as you get older and that's also a contributing factor. But I'd be very interested in knowing if anybody is having an increase in enrollment. And if they are having an increase, the question I would have is why? And I'd be very interested in finding that out.
Okay, I can get that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Ms. Lockerbie?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Conway, for your report. I'm curious if you can briefly explain how the COVID hold harmless is affecting all of this data? I know that's a very broad question. If you can just begin to address that.
Sure, okay. COVID, COVID has directly impacted the reporting and use of attendance numbers for our funding in particular. Oh, is it on? Sorry, I'm looking at you instead of the microphone, sorry. Yeah, COVID has directly impacted our enrollment, the way our enrollment and attendance numbers are used for funding. In 2020, 21, because of the COVID pandemic and every district around the state was, or virtually every district, was teaching virtually not in person, the state recognized that that was going to be a particular challenge in trying to track attendance. It was going to have a large impact on attendance and enrollment and an unknown impact as well as potentially a large impact. So the state decided that 2020, 21, last year, the attendance for school districts would not be reported up to the state. So they got our enrollment numbers in October and there are a few things they use that for. But in terms of attendance, we did not report anything to the state for 2020, 21. We kept the records for our own purposes, for some other audit purposes. So when the state is looking at our funding for 2020, 21 attendance, they are ignoring that and using 2019, 20 again. So 2019, 20 funds two years in a row and 2020, 21 gets ignored. So the fact that we declined in 2020, 21, we actually didn't decline in our funding, but our 2020, 21 is compared to 2019, 20 in terms of what kind of funding difference we have between those two years. The other thing to keep in mind, and we talk about this when we do our budget presentations, is that there's a, an ongoing, I don't know if they call it a hold harmless provision, but it is a declining enrollment provision. So that if you are declining in enrollment, you're allowed to use prior year instead of current year when they count your fund, when they calculate your funding. So what that means is typically this year, 2021, 22, our funding would be based on 2021, based on prior year. But because they didn't count 2021, our 21, 22 funding is actually based on 2019, 20. So both last year and this year are based on 2019, 20. Assuming we decline next year, next year's main source of revenue will be based on this year's enrollment, attendance. They do that to give districts kind of a soft landing as they, as they're declining because it can be, especially if it's unexpected, it can be a sudden drop in revenue. So they try to mitigate that somewhat. But that's the whole harmless is basically 2021 was a freebie, they're not going to count it. They know it was an unusual year that is not indicative of what a school was doing. So they're using 2019, 20 twice and 2021, 22 moving forward, unless they decide to do something with 2021, 22 and make another hold harmless, it is certainly possible. It's another very strange year despite the fact that everybody's back.
Thank you. Ms. Golar?
Hi, Mr. Conway.
Hello.
Thanks for your presentation. I'm curious as to the number, the ADA, 94.9%? That's the average daily attendance for the district, right?
I'm sorry, say that number again.
94.9%?
Oh, yes.
That's the average daily attendance for the whole entire district, correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right. Prior to COVID, so 18, 19, 19, 20, is that the same or?
It varies slightly. The previous year was also about 95%. It has ranged a little higher than that to 95.5%. So I think it has had a small impact.
Okay.
But it's hard to say. One thing that impacts that as well is the mix of students. So if we have more independent study and continuation students, typically they have a little worse attendance based on the way the attendance is calculated and, and reported. So that might have a minor impact as well.
And do you know if we establish a annual target in terms of ADA that we're, because that's revenue, right?
Yes.
So do we shoot for 95 or 96? Do we have an established goal or target?
Not at this time. We shoot for the absolute best we can do. We, we continue to push our administrators to help get their kids to school. It's a total win-win. Having kids in school regardless of the funding impact is one of the most critical things we can do to make sure they're educated. So it's already a vitally important part of what the schools are doing. If you think about, if you think about kids who happen to be sick, especially now, you know, don't show up at school, but if, if you're, if you're not sick, if you're on vacation, if you're going to be gone for extended period of time, there's something called short-term independent study. The parent can talk to the school, talk to the counselor at the school or whoever's in charge of it at that individual school. And the teachers will assign work to the student that they can do while they're away from school. We can still get attendance credit for those days, the student is still learning. Again, that's a big win-win as well. If you've got, if you've got a student that has a dental appointment or a doctor appointment or for some other reason is going to be gone for a period of time during the day, it's important for that student to show up at school in the morning, come to school after the appointment in the afternoon. If that student is in school for any period of time during the day, whether it's one period or five periods or six periods, we get credit for attendance for that day. So we get the funding. And again, just as importantly, the student can get the work from the teachers, can learn what it is they're supposed to have been doing and receive the homework and do the work that they can continue to keep, keep up with their class and keep up with engagement with the school.
Board Clerk Golar, just to add to that answer, we do have a target. You know, we are looking for anything above 95%. That's something that we explicitly shared with our IL team, which is our principals and directors at the start of the school year back in August when we came together. That was one of the things that we mentioned as being a goal is to be over 95% as a district and at each and every one of our schools. As Mr. Conway mentioned, one of the difficulties this year is how unusual of a year this is, especially starting off, you know, with COVID and some of the implications that COVID has had in quarantining and having to send home students through quarantining. Technically, those are absences that count against our ADA. So that becomes a very big issue for us. And even though we have a handle on things now and even though we do have a process in place, as Mr. Conway mentioned, with our independent study program, short-term and long-term, it still is an issue and it still is a challenge. And it's not something that Monrovia faces alone. Every school district is facing this too. There's another phenomenon out there that, again, not only Monrovia is facing, but other districts as well, is that as students have returned back to schools, families have returned back to school, in some cases, attendance has been a little harder to get to the number we'd like it to be with some students and families for a variety of situations, largely because of the impact of the pandemic in so many different ways. Later on tonight, you'll hear about some updates in policy and things like that related to attendance that largely bring us into compliance with some legal aspects. But I know Dr. Cabrera and Dr. Jackson were also willing and ready to enable to discuss some of the things we are doing to drive attendance up, some of the steps that we're taking. But this will be an ongoing challenge. At this point, it's unclear, as Vice President Lockerbie mentioned about hold harmless and that concept, it's unclear at this point if the state's planning on doing anything like that. There's been some chatter, but not a lot of chatter. It'll be difficult to say exactly what they do. But regardless, it's up to us to try to make sure that our ADA is as high of a percentage as possible and we are committed to that and we're working really hard on it.
Thank you. Are you good?
Are there any other questions?
I think we're good. Thank you, Mr. Conway, for your presentation. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Routine items of business placed on the consent agenda have been carefully screened by members of the staff and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. I believe Ms. Anderson has questions on a couple items and we'll go ahead and entertain that now.
May I ask my questions now or do you need the motion?
Yes, go ahead. Can you identify the item number, please?
Absolutely. There, there are two items that I just had a little bit of a follow-up on. Item number three, agreement with Explore Learning to include Fracs Foundations. And item number five, agreement with Rocketology LLC. In both cases, I have asked for some baseline In both cases, I have asked for some baseline data and some post-data for comparison reasons, so that we can effectively evaluate these programs. In addition to the MI from September and spring for 2022, what I would hope is that we would have prior years so that we can not only see the growth for that year, but to see as we include new programs, what our growth is over and above previous years where those programs had not yet been in place. Does that make sense?
It does.
So just to clarify, when we have report out on them in future to include not just the growth for this year, but where we started, so we can see what has been accomplished with these new programs.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you very much.
And that was for items number three and five.
And five, FRACs and Rocketology, yes.
Okay.
Happy to make a motion for consent.
Go ahead, Anderson. With that language, the motion with that language.
Okay, so I move to approve the consent agenda with the language that we add additional data in for items three and five, such that we can evaluate prior years in addition to current years to note the effectiveness of these new two programs, two new programs.
Perfect. We have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion a second. Ms. Huff, can you call a roll, please?
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Golar?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerby?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Onto action items. Educational Services, Adoption of Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Esser III Plan, Dr. Sue Kaiser.
Good evening, Board President Travanti, Board Superintendent Smith, fellow Cabinet members and community. Tonight, the Board of Education is requested to adopt the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Esser III Plan. The Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Esser III Plan outlines the uses and expenditures for this funding. The plan has been presented and discussed with all stakeholder groups and is required to be approved by the Board of Education no later than October 31, 2021, in accordance with the American Rescue Plan Act. Implementation will begin immediately, and funds must be expended by September 30, 2024. The funding will be used for professional development, technology, supplemental materials, and summer school programs. Any surplus in funds will be used for the HVAC and site refurbishment in alignment with allowable uses. The amount of these funds are $7,853,555. And I have Courtney Glass here, who is going to walk us through a short presentation on the journey to getting to the place where we're ready to present this to the board in relation to our stakeholder meetings and the requirements therein. And then also, you'll notice that the plan is written in very broad brushstrokes, which is allowable. These are quite a few dollars for us to expand, and we want to make sure that we're very careful and that we're good stewards of the money moving forward. We have checked with all of the departments to see what the highest needs are in our school district, and this is an opportunity for us to take care of some of the capital expenses that we have. So we're very excited about that, as well as these other categories. So, Mr. Glass, please, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. Good evening, Board President Travanti, members of the board, Dr. Smith and Cabinet, thank you for having me here tonight to present this. Some of the questions that did come up, Dr. Kaiser gave a very good overview of the plan. One of the first questions that came up the first time I presented it is, why is this the third one? Where were the first two? And the first one wasn't called Esser, it was called the CARES Act Fund, and that was given in more of an immediacy from the federal government to keep us going. And then the second one was called, sometimes it was called Carissa, and then sometimes it was Esser II. Neither one of those required a plan. They were really emergency funds provided by the federal government for schools, for the state, for small businesses, large businesses, all of that. So with Esser III, the state changed the rules a little bit and requires a plan, similar in some ways to the LCAP with some of the requirements and expectations, which is why Dr. Kaiser asked me to ride shotgun with her in preparing this. So the first, the first thing we're looking at are the three categories for the funds to be used. The first one is what are we doing to keep kids in school? In-person learning, so that is the first category. The second one, addressing the lost instructional time. What are we doing with what was lost during COVID and the pandemic and school closures and dismissals? And the third one, and I think I had three different people try to change this bullet, because they said, you can't just put use of remaining funds. And I said, no. The third category of the plan is use of remaining funds. That is the state's category for the third one. So that's not just us saying and everything else. That is actually the third category for us to use those funds. And to what Dr. Kaiser said, broad strokes. We have, it's a large chunk of money, we have three years, the allowable uses are very broad, and so we wanted to make sure that we use this money wisely over the course of the next, the next three years. So those are the three official categories with which we will be spending the funds. Some of the details, I won't hit them all, because Dr. Kaiser did hit most of these. But one of the key things that I will say is we're going to keep asking. That was one of the things from, from the students, from the PTA Council, from the teachers that I, that I talked to when I talked through this plan, was you need to keep asking. And so we are, we're going to continue to ensure that all of our stakeholder groups, more parents, more students, all teachers, all staff members have a chance to give input as we continue. And that's, again, why we have kind of some broad language in the plan, is so that we continue to have flexibility to use these funds, because there is some flexibility in them. And so here's just some details to, to what Dr. Kaiser had said, the one thing up here. There are, there is a list of 15 allowable uses to go in those three categories. They're a very public 15. I do have a copy, I have the list. If you, a couple people did it during some of the meetings. They got on, got on their phones and they Googled allowable uses for Esser III, and they pop right up. They're very, very public. So those are the uses for this almost $8 million that we have. So we're going to look at the three categories and where we're kind of looking to spend these funds. So the first category, a little over $1 million, too. Supplemental materials, ensuring where we have core materials, maybe we need something different for our supplemental materials, whether that is in some of our special education classrooms, some of our ELD classrooms, maybe in some of our, some of our younger students with, with just needing some, some extra materials that our core materials may not reach, possibly looking at our middle schools and our high school are without some intervention materials in some places. And so just really looking at, this is a chance to get something in, whatever that may look like. Again, asking the teachers, getting the feedback as to what they need in order to help with our student learning. Social-emotional learning supports here, that is a big push for the Esser III funds, is to continue to provide funding for making sure our students feel comfortable coming back to school. Remember, this chunk is the in-person learning part. And then technology, continue to make sure our students have a Chromebook that is working, that they're bringing to school and that they're using. And then in addition to that, for the classrooms, we're looking at an audio amplification system. Even, even me standing right here for my, you know, six, seven, eight minutes, and I'm going to be up here having to talk through the mask, our teachers are doing it all day. And so looking for a way to get them, something on them, a microphone somehow, microphones for the kids to amplify voices, so our teachers aren't worn out at the end of the day. And then also looking at some presentation technology. We're keeping that broad, because we're not sure what we want. We don't know if that's smart boards or interactive touchboards or just new mounted projectors onto, to new screens. One of those things that it might look different in fourth grade than it does in kindergarten, than it does in biology, than it does in, in seventh grade history. So we want to make sure, again, that we're getting, that we're spending the money on things that our teachers will use, that our students do need. So that's our first chunk. Our second chunk, one of the requirements of the Esser III is that 20% of the funds are spent in this second category. So 20% of the funds must be spent addressing the instructional time lost due to COVID. And so that's why we budgeted the 1.6 million, which would be a little over the 20% for, for this. Here, we're looking to continue to offer the robust summer school that we were able to offer this past year, offering summer school the programs that we haven't offered in the past, whether that's our K6 dual immersion programs, our opt-in programs for students who we don't usually target in grades four through eight, and then additional classes at the high school for students who maybe aren't just doing credit recovery, but they can have some other options. So offering that robust summer school. As Dr. Kaiser mentioned, professional development, extra hours for our staff. One of the big pushes in this chunk of the Esser III plan is to extend time, add time. We know we can't make up the time that was lost, but if that's teachers spending an extra 30 minutes a day at the end of the school day, or if a bus arrives early and they spend 30 minutes at the beginning of the day, or if an aide who's only there for three hours, three and a half hours is their contractual time, but they can stay for two hours in the afternoon, because their life allows them to, then we bring them into a different classroom to support. So it's extending that kind of time is what those, the third and fourth bullet are there. And then our big category, our use of remaining funds. And this is where Dr. Kaiser referred to some capital, an opportunity to help some of our capital funding that needs a little support. We're looking at two of our bigger facilities in the district that are almost unusable at different times of the year. If you've ever been inside the Santa Fe gym in July or August, it's a little toasty. Or September, October. So we're looking at an air filtration and HVAC system there. It's been brought up to me a couple times, hey, we probably don't need heat in there. And we'll make sure that on the bid, we take that into account, because we want to make sure they can use it in January and February as well for PE. And then also looking at the Clifton Auditorium. If you've ever been in that Clifton Auditorium in January, February in the morning, you might not have all 10 of your fingers still. So again, looking to, to, to support that with a new air filtration system and an HVAC system. There are also other rooms, other facilities throughout the district that might need new systems in that regard, and so this is an opportunity to upgrade those. There's a list somewhere of doors and windows that need to be upgraded one way or another, possibly as little as sanded down and given a new paint job, and maybe as major as a new door and a new door jamb, or new windows and new window frames. So this is an opportunity to take a look at, at those needs. And then this other one is, again, where we, where we go broad. When I brought this up, somebody said, well, what about play structures? We've got a couple of schools that need play structures. Great, that's something we can absolutely look at, make sure it fits into the allowable uses, and the county says yes, then that can be something we look at. So this is, again, where we're going to continue to ask the stakeholders what the needs are in order to then support those things. But looking at facilities that can maybe need some upgrades. And then our health team saw an opportunity here, and they came and said, hey, we're using audiology machines from the 1980s to test our kids to see if they can hear. Or we don't have scales and other tools in every nurse's office. We have to carry the scale from one school to another, or ice makers are breaking and things like that. So this is an opportunity to ensure that every, every nurse's office at every school site has everything they need in order to, to serve our students. So that's what we're looking at here. Questions, I think, is the next slide. Yes, questions?
Questions or comments for Dr. Kaiser?
Just thank you very much, Mr. Glass. Very quick question. Well, first comment, thank you for considering the HVAC systems of Santa Fe and Clifton, because even in winter during those concerts, it can be awfully warm in, in the gym at Santa Fe. I also know that the, or I believe that the old gym at MHS doesn't appear to have any kind of HVAC system. Is that something that we need to consider as well? Or is there a reason that that's not being presented?
So that, that was not on the initial list that I received from, at the time, the business office, but that was brought up by the students as well, that the, the South Gym or the Little Gym or the, there were a few other names for that gym, but that it gets warm as well. And so that, along with the Wild Rose play structure, the Plymouth play structure, those are actually three of the facilities who, which have come in the feedback of the, of the stakeholder group. So, so that's on the next list down to definitely be looked at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. I was cross-referencing the slideshow with the plan that we have. And I, I got it, I followed, and I was good. I just wanted to go back to category one under the continuous learning in the slide presentation. The second bullet says social emotional learning supports. But then going over to the, the plan, I wasn't able to connect the dot there. I see the technology and the audio amplification, but I was not clear how that was going to match up, the social emotional support.
Okay, I might need to update that. I will, I will take a look at that tomorrow morning, and I will let you know where I have made some adjustments.
Thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
Thank you. First off, just to comment, some of these things sound like they're facility problems, and they're in the facilities master plan that everybody received a copy of about six weeks ago. That's the document that was prepared that outlined some of the immediate needs of the, of the, of the district's facilities. My concern and my, and their comment is the board has not prioritized those needs yet. To go forward with this, and I'm not saying to delay this, I'm saying going forward with this, it's allowing somebody other than the board to prioritize the work that we're going to do. Because what will happen is it will come back to the board as a recommendation from staff to do something, rather than the board directing staff to do something. There's a nuance there. And I want to make sure that we, as a board, are directing what we think is the most important needs to address, not having staff tell us what they think is. That is a very important concept for us to um live by. Um, so I'm concerned about that. Because these are all needs that are in that um facilities plan. The second is, the Santa Fe gym was built as a uh as a partnership between the city and the school. And my question is, is there an M O U that exists for shared cost of maintenance? It may have sunsetted, uh sunsetted, and therefore it all buts on us. But I'd like to know before we take any steps forward to shoulding shouldering the burden completely on our own until we know if we have a partner or not. And the reason I know that Santa Fe gym was a city and school partnership, it was built with pass-through funds that was used for redevelopment. It was done quite a while ago, but generally speaking, there was an M O U that that put out who is responsible for what. So I'd like to make sure that it either there's not one in place and enforced, or it has sunset and is purely. And the second, Mr. Glass, you made a comment about Clifton. Were you being um what I'm looking for? Were you being um uh joking about losing ten digits going into there? Or is it that cold? And you were just using as a dramatization?
Uh, so I'll respond to uh the first and the third there, Mr. Hammond. Thank you for for those questions. Um, one thing that uh when it comes to the S R three, I I I won't speak to uh to the nuance between the board to the staff, the staff to the board. I I understand what you're saying there. Um, is the S R three, you, we have to ensure that we can make it come back to um returning from COVID. And so that's why the the a lot of the facility pieces will be about what can we do to ensure the air filtration um and and windows and doors and and bringing kids back safely to campus. Um, it cannot be every facility use. So again, not uh not answering the the nuance there because that's not my place to speak to that. But just for these funds at least, it has to be specific to to those sort of air filtration, um COVID safety type of facility things. To the third one, um, I have not lost a digit, but it is very, very cold in that auditorium on a January morning. Uh, if the heater's not on, um, we had a speaker in there probably about four years ago, five years ago, who came in and she literally kept her wool jacket that she owned from being on the East Coast on her entire presentation up in front with the spotlight uh due to how cold it was. So no, I have all ten of my fingers, but it gets really cold in there.
Okay, well, the reason I asked the question because you're delivering a report to us and it's supposed to be factually based. And so when you use the language that you used, what happens is if I'm just a person in the public and I'm ascertaining that there's a tremendous problem here and our students are not safe. And I do not want to convey that kind of a message to the public. That's why I asked, it was used for a dramatization? That's one thing. If it's factual, then we have a big problem and we need to address it immediately.
No, that was uh an exaggeration on my part. I apologize for that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Lockerbie?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to ask the question because I'm sure many people would like to know. Um, you are men- with all of this money that is being given to us and um the guidelines for spending it are given to us, there's no mention of being able to hire a teacher. A or or more many teachers. I see extra hours and I see aides. Can you address that for the public? Uh, and address the reason why?
Yes, um, these monies are given to us as one-time monies. And when we hire new staff, um, any staff, be it a a full-time instructional aide or a full-time counselor or full-time teachers, this money runs out in three years. And so we're looking at how can we best meet some of the needs of our students without adding staff that would run out and then we'd be in a layoff mode on the other end. Um, and so that's the purpose as to why. And so the strategies, the strategic thinking about how do we begin to meet the needs, et cetera, additional time, um utilizing extra hours for staff, additional time with our existing instructional aides um and different people that could come in with some programming to deliver some some very good um str- strategic help for our students.
And there's all, there's so there's a, there's a a long-term financial implication that we wouldn't be able to afford with this money.
It would not be.
Because it is one time, the 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 long-term projected financial implication of a new teacher is something that we couldn't afford.
Right.
And then we'd be faced with layoffs.
And we're looking at things that are sustainable. Um, and you know, even with some of the facilities pieces that um the business office sat down and looked through many, many um targets that are in the the legislation for this. Um, as Mr. Glass explained, it needs to be things that purify the air and that you know, windows where we could replace windows, which those are capital outlay items. They're allowable in this because it has to do with returning to school. And so those are the pieces that were um picked off as we collaborated with the business office.
Um, on the playground equipment that you mentioned as part of the next year, I guess, what category does that fall in under?
The 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 place where it is in uh in the plan is under the other facility needs in the third category, the use of any remaining funds.
So that one's a broad one. That one's a little more broad, the the remaining.
Everything, everything in the plan, the entire seven point eight million is all about returning to school post-COVID. So that one is is broad in the sense that it's not specific to the lost instructional time. And it's not specific to um to the um the the safe in-person learning, but it is to the returning to school, opening our doors and ensuring safety for our students.
Understand, I'm not against upgrading playground equipment for our students. I just want to make sure that it falls into that category. Does a playground, does playground equipment bring students back? Is that what we're saying?
What we're saying is we we want to ensure that when they do come back, they have safe equipment to be playing on.
Okay. And what we're saying right now, it's not safe?
Uh, that was the feedback that I received. So right now, the 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 Little Gym that Board Member Anderson referred to and the two playground equipments, those are examples of some feedback I received. They're actually not written into the plan. Um, I don't think I wrote them into the plan.
Okay.
That's gonna be part of the continued feedback to determine what makes sense for next steps for getting this going. The feedback I received was we do have a couple of play structures that do need to be upgraded.
Okay.
I don't honestly know more than that.
Okay. Um, and the reason why I'm asking these kind of questions is because with the CARES Act money, the federal money that came in, it got audited. And the state has been dinged because of that, because they did not follow a plan. And this is why we have a plan for this, for S R three. We want to make sure we're following it to the T.
The the S R three plan will will be approved by Laco, by the same people who approved the LCAP. So it will be looked at before it is officially accepted. And it will be sent back with revisions if revisions are required.
Okay. Thanks for explaining that process. I'm good. Thank you both, Dr. Kaiser and Mr. Glass.
Thank you. And um Board President Travanti, this was also a larger cabinet broad discussion with the business department too um in terms of the many hours that went into doing the analysis. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Board President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I I have a question to
Yes.
the president. We are being asked to approve, I believe.
Yeah.
The
It's it is, it's an action item.
To adopt it.
It it is an action item.
With the um provision that Mr. Glass said that he was going to make an alteration, or should we bring it back?
No, uh, we can um add that as part of the motion.
Right. You know what part I'm talking about.
The social emotional.
Right. Reflected in that in that first category, I guess.
Okay.
So just to maybe help, first of all, I will email you the revision and what will go in there. I'll email you that blurb in the morning. So the board will have that. Um, but yes, the the it is to to be um approved.
Can I piggyback on that and ask for clarification of what supplemental materials are, is, are? How it is reflected in this plan? Because for strategies for continuous and safe in-person learning, we see ELO, Plan Integrated Student Supports of student Chromebooks, teacher audio devices and classroom presentation technology. So in addition to social emotional learning supports not being here, I'm curious what the supplemental mater- are the supplemental materials, the Chromebooks, et cetera, or are there supplemental materials that are?
I think they're in the next. I think they're in the next one because the Chromebooks are in the first one.
Yes, and also where we have summer school and then the support during school in the summer school, when it talks about continuing to offer summer school to all students, that's inclusive of the entire program, which would include any supplemental materials that we need to purchase for that as well as the staffing.
So you're talking about page four of seven?
Yes.
So that's under lost instructional time?
Mm-hmm.
I see that and thank you for that. What I'm grappling with is lost instructional time is a different category. So you're looking at the strategies for continuous and safe in-person learning, the bullets that you have listed, one of them is supplemental materials. So the page four of seven to which you are referring, doctor, is in dress addressing the impact of lost instructional time, that's a different category. So that is summer school, P D, extra hours, support intervention, et cetera, which I appreciate and thank you very much. But just to continue to be thorough, um, what are supplemental materials?
So I will, I will ensure that those, that that is in there and I will highlight that and I will email that as well. Uh, the supplemental materials, however, right now are uh, it will not, it it's not specific because we're not sure yet what we need.
Okay.
So over the course of the next year or so, we're going to continue to ask teachers to find out what they need and ensure that the materials that we are getting match the needs of both the student and the teacher.
That's wonderful and I really appreciate that. This is um a constantly moving situation and I really appreciate that you are keeping that open and being flexible because that's absolutely what we need to do. What we needed yesterday, we might not need tomorrow or vice versa. Um, please address it in some sort of way that flexible, what whatever this this is because it's not in this. So I appreciate that very much.
Sorry, and and this may be addressed to you, um, Board President Travanti. Uh, at this point, I think I'm a little in the weeds on this as to what we are approving. Are we approving this this overarching um plan and anything within this is then fair game? Or is this going to come back and we see it revisited at some point um with more specifics?
Okay, are you under a deadline to get this plan or what what's the time con- uh frame here?
We are under a deadline to turn this plan in in these broad brushstrokes. In terms of how it flushes out in the individual categories, we can certainly before we're, you know, spending the dollars, all of those dollars will come before the board as it's unfolding and we can, you know, as the pieces are being planned, we can certainly put that in Friday updates. We could bring that back to board meetings. Right now, we've been asked to just use broad brushstrokes and to address these these areas in terms of getting these funds. Um, they've come very rapidly with very short times for planning. And we want to be prudent and good stewards of the money as it comes to the district. So um as it's unfolding in its specifics, definitely, these are things that will be coming before the board as they unfold.
So would it be appropriate to paraphrase by saying that these would be examples of uses of these monies, but the the details will be ironed out in future?
And these are sort of broad categories, really.
Uh, well, uh, they might be broad categories, but when we're talking very about about very specific topics, we've now lost that broadness. So that's where I want to ensure clarity that if we're if we're looking at a broad uh area of which to approve so that we can hone in on the the needs as we move forward, that's different than sort of blanket approval.
Yeah, and that would be exactly how this should unfold.
Okay, uh, that answers my question. Yes, thank you. Okay, okay, great.
Any other questions or discussion?
Dr. Kaiser, how can you help us be comfortable with me, let's um me speak for myself, I beg your pardon. Uh, how can you help me be comfortable um voting for this with the broad strokes so that you, so that we can meet the deadlines for submission? Would I ask? I I mean, you have already said that you will come to us before you spend the money. So I I think I'm comfortable with that. I've answered my own question. I apologize for taking your time.
I'm smiling under the nails.
Okay, I'll stop talking now.
So is the board comfortable um doing a motion that we would get and we would get updated, the board will be updated with how it's going to be spent, what the details of those and also the piece on social emotional learning? And if you want to clarify that, go go ahead, Ms. Golar.
We have that understanding.
Yes.
But I don't want to lose sight of the point made by Board Member Hammond.
No, absolutely not.
Because we got that thick notebook
Right.
of capital, what is it called? Outlay in terms of prioritizing. So if there is still the broad categories, but flexibility in what the money is expended upon, should we have missed, especially in the use of any remaining funds? If there is a facility or another A C or something that we might have missed, we can go back and put it in there, then I'm good.
Right, with board input.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Hammond, are you good with that?
It's less than perfect, but most things are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hammond. Okay. Entertain a motion? So moved. Okay, with those caveats. Uh, a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Ms. Huff, can you call roll, please?
For Member Golar?
Yes.
For Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
For Member Anderson?
Yes.
For Member Hammond?
Yes.
For President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. We'll move on to uh human resources, Dr. We'll move on to Human Resources, Dr. Darvin Jackson with Agreement with COVID Clinic, Inc.
Yes, Board President Travanti, members of the board, cabinet, Dr. Smith, and the community. For accuracy, Board President, I'd ask, actually like to ask for a simple amendment of the action. We've not entered into utilizing COVID clinic services as of yet, so we just want to make sure it's an approval and not a ratification. So, the Board of Education has requested to approve an agreement with COVID Clinic to perform COVID-19 weekly testing and host vaccination clinics as needed. They'll be able to provide testing and results within 24 to 48 hours, in addition to booster shots, those vaccination clinics utilizing Pfizer. And there is no budget implication to the district.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Any questions or comments for Dr. Jackson? Ms. Lockerbie?
I just wanted to clarify for my own understanding, when you said you wanted to make an amendment, this isn't a ratification, this is an approval.
Correct.
And it's an approval, because we haven't entered yet into the agreement.
Correct.
If we had, it would have been a ratification.
Right, and we have not utilized their services.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Because we have not yet entered into this agreement, how long do you anticipate it taking for us to ramp up and begin using COVID clinic services? And then, is there any ramification for us no longer using, is it, I believe it's LFN?
Correct. No ramifications, to answer your second question, in approximately 10 days, ramp up.
So, will there be any time in which we are not able to offer these services? Or will we be able to seamlessly transition from LFN to COVID clinic?
We will seamlessly transition.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Huff, can you call roll?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Golar?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Oh, at this time, the next item is a public hearing and approval of CSCEA District Joint Initial Proposal Topics for 2021-22 Negotiations. I'll open up the public hearing. Are there any, is anybody waiting for a public comment? Okay, then we'll close that section, a public comment, and Dr. Jackson.
Yes, the Board of Education is requested to hold a public hearing, as you did, on the joint proposals for modifications of the current CSCEA District Collective Bargaining Agreement, and approve the joint initial proposal for the 21-22 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, Ms. Huff, can you call roll, please?
Board Member Golar?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Huff, and with the next item, I'll open up the public clearing, hearing and approval of MTA District Joint Initial Proposal Topics for the 21-22 Negotiations. Are there any pending? Hearing none and seeing none? We'll go ahead and close that section, and Dr. Jackson.
Being that the joint hearing has been closed, the board is asked to approve the joint initial proposal for the 21-22 school year.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Huff, can you call roll, please?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Tracy.
Sorry.
Ms. Golar was the second.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Golar?
Yes.
Board President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Huff, and we'll move on to Board Business, Dr. Ryan Smith.
We actually have a few different items related to some board policies related to attendance.
Okay. Dr. Jackson?
Thank you. I've also asked our Director of Student Support Services, Dr. Cabrera, to join us this evening, as she has worked diligently and effortlessly on updating these policies, some not having been updated for some time. So, the Board of Education is requested to receive for First Reading Board Policy 5112.5, Open Campus, as recommended by the California School Boards Association. Open Campus clarifies options for an open campus and adds language regarding district criteria for student eligibility for open campus privileges, et cetera.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Any questions or comments regarding Board Policy 5112.5, Open Campus? Hearing none, seeing none? This is-
This is informational, Madam President.
Yeah, this is informational. Okay, first reading for this, so.
May I make a recommendation that there's no changes in these, they come back on consent?
I'm good with that. Are you, everybody, yeah, we have consensus, so we'll bring that one back on consent the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, President Travanti.
And, next, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, the Board of Education is requested to receive for First Reading Board Policies 5113, Absences and Excuses, 5113.1, Chronic Absence and Truancy, and their accompanying administrative regulations as recommended by the California School Board Association. These policies contain revisions as recommended by the CSBA for Board Policy and AR 5113, Absences and Excuses, and Chronic Absence and Truancy.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Any comments or questions, Ms. Lockerbie?
Thank you, thank you very much for this. This is a straightforward board policy that talks about the law. The law says, get your, your child has to be in school, and we're required to support that, support the law. That's straightforward. I don't want to miss this opportunity tonight to talk about the nuances of this, not just the straightforwardness of the law, because that's, I understand straightforward, but part of the nuances of this board policy is talking about chronic absenteeism. And, there are difficulties for some families getting their children to school. And I was wondering, Dr. Cabrera, if you had the opportunity this evening to talk to us about some of the difficulties that you have identified within the district, and talk to us all about ways that you are working to mitigate those difficulties.
Well, I want to thank Board President Travanti and the Board of Education, Dr. Smith, for allowing me to be able to come and speak on this. In my experience, we have seen a lot of trauma based on COVID and staying home from schools. We have students that have almost fallen out of the habit of being in school, if you will, after not being in school for 18 to 24 months. And, we have parents who are doing everything they can to keep their lives together, to work several jobs, who are gone early in the morning, who are gone till late at night, and, and do our asking for help in how they can make sure that their students are being educated. I have gone on home visits myself, I've gone with our school resource officer, I have gone with school administrators. We've gone as early as 7:00 in the morning, we've gone as late as 6:30, 7:00 o'clock at night, to be able to meet with families and to be able to ask what it is that they need in order to be able to get their children to school. The, the greatest issue that we see is that there are some students that are being resistant. And so, we have had SART meetings, School Attendance Review Team meetings, that have spelled out ways to be able to support at home. We've offered counseling through DeVeau, we've offered check-ins through school guidance counselors and intervention counselors, and we've also had administrators and counselors go out in the mornings as well, to go knock on those doors, to make sure that the students are getting up and coming to school. So, the, the process of attendance, School Attendance Review Team, School Attendance Review Board, while it seems punitive from the outside looking in, it's really an intervention process, and it's really a process that helps to bring the community together, to bring all of our resources together locally, to help our families ensure that our students are being properly educated and in school, so that they can receive their education.
I really appreciate that information. You know, I, I have heard President Travanti say before, you know, it's not one size for all. And to be able to go out in the community, and something that you said that, that really struck me as compelling, is you ask what they need. And to go out there and find what the need is, and be able to address it, I'm very appreciative of that. Because, we, as you said, we can't just be punitive. We can't, you know, we have to follow the law, but there's more to it, and I appreciate I want to say the grout that you're putting in between the bricks to help build this, this great structure. So, I appreciate the time that you've given, and the work that you're doing and going out there, and actually knocking on doors, seeing what is needed, understanding that there are different needs. For, everybody's needs are different, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that. And along those lines, can you speak to, generally, any success stories? I mean, have you had some successes already? And I know you haven't been in our district very long, but if you could share?
Absolutely. There, we have, we've had a couple of success stories. One student comes to mind at the high school who wasn't going to school. We went to his home in the morning and just said, "Why are you not going?" And he really didn't have a reason for not going, and in talking to mom, there's been some, some real family trauma, dad's been very sick. And so, getting him almost motivated to go to school was very difficult for her, and he, he says, "Well, you know, why should I go to school? I don't do the work anyway, and, and I'm not going to stay there long," and, you know. And, and so, in talking to him, we could tell that there were some things going on, but he really felt for his mom, and I said, "You really just need to brush your teeth, put on some shoes, and let's go." And, he looked at me and said, "Okay." So, he went and grabbed his shoes, brushed his teeth, and, and we got in the car and we went to school. And, I called Mr. McGinnis and said, "Hey, I'm coming with one of your kids who hasn't been in school since the beginning, this was about week four now." And, I said, "I need you to meet him at the door, and, and have that conversation with him, and get him set up and ready to go, whatever that path may be, whether he was going to be looking at going to Canyon Oaks, whether he was, you know, whatever the case was going to be." And so, I, I do enjoy working with the principals and calling ahead and saying, "I've got one of your kids with me, I need you to meet him at the door," because I really think it's important for somebody from the school that is going to say, "I'm glad you're here, and we're going to get you through." And so, that was, that was a great opportunity for me to see this kid, and, and as far as I know, he's still going, so I'm, I'm pretty proud of that.
Excellent. Great, and, and thank you for sharing that, because I know for some of these kids, the hole gets so deep, that they don't see the light and how they can get out of that hole. So that, those extra steps right there are crucial for getting our kids back in school, and saying, "Oh, okay, I can do this." So, thank you very much for sharing that. Anderson?
Thank you, Dr. Cabrera. As you're well aware, I spent a lot of time dissecting this document, and I appreciate the time that you took to explain it to me. I feel compelled to reiterate my gratitude tonight. The language that's used here is, is legal, and I have a real problem with children being referred to as a truant, as you know, or a habitual truant, or a chronic truant, or whatever the term is. Those are behaviors, and you have very effectively demonstrated tonight that you approach these children as students, and human beings, and children with behaviors, and sometimes very valid reasons for, for struggling with compliance. And that they are not defined as a truant, or a chronic absentee, but that is legal language that we're required to use. That doesn't mean that we treat them as such, and so I appreciate, I want to recognize the fact that you clearly have demonstrated that, and, and thank you, on behalf of our students and families.
Thank you. If it's okay with the board, then we'll bring this policy, 5113.1, back on consent in the next board meeting. We good? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Do you have the next one? The next item on the agenda is Resolution Recognizing the State of Emergency and Declaring the Need for Teleconference Meetings Pursuant to AB 361.
Madam President, the Board of Education is requested to adopt Resolution Number 2122-09, Recognizing the State of Emergency and Declaring the Need for Continued Teleconference Meetings Pursuant to AB 361.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Any questions or discussion? I'll entertain, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second? We have a motion and a second, Ms. Huff, can you call roll, please?
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Golar?
Yes.
Board President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
The next item? Me? Okay. All right. Sorry. The next item is Independent Audit and Review of All Records, Transactions, Policies, Practices, and Procedures Related to Employee Absences, Leaves, Including Compensated Absences.
Madam President, this act, this agenda item would direct the Superintendent to select an independent auditor to audit and review all records, transactions, policies, practices, and procedures related to employee absences and leaves, including compensated absences, and prepare a report for the Board of Education that includes findings, conclusions, and recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Any questions or comments? None? I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Additional discussion? Ms. Huff, can you call roll, please?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Golar?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Huff, and we are at Pending Board Issues, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, President Travanti. Just a couple of things to highlight that we are working on. For our next board meeting in November, we will be bringing, I believe, our site single plan for student achievements, otherwise known as CIPSAs, for approval. That is an annual process and an annual item that we asked the board to approve, that's related to some direct funding for each of our school sites and for their own planning. A little further out in December, I know Mr. Conway and his team will be hard at work on preparing our first interim budget report, and I know the board will be quite interested to see that. We are also in the process of scheduling board visitations to our secondary schools in the second semester. So, we'll be notifying the board of some potential dates to get out to our secondary school sites, Monrovia High School included, in the second semester. And then, obviously, we are also busy, as can be, getting ready for our annual State of the Schools address, which is going to be fantastic, and will be on November 17th at Monrovia High School, and we're looking forward to that. I also wanted to mention, since Dr. Cabrera is here, Dr. Cabrera has been hard at work with, kind of working with one of our, some of our local law enforcement officials, and some people at the city level, to identify safe routes home from school. This was an item that has been on our board, our pending board business, or board items, and we hope to have an update for the board real soon on what that looks like. We're real excited, and I'm grateful to Dr. Cabrera for all the work and the time she's put in to make that a reality. Essentially, the heart of that project is clearly identifying safe routes home in all different directions from each of our school, as well as routes to avoid, for one reason or the other.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and I believe the ask also was to include those routes in the school site safety plans.
And that is part of our plan.
Perfect.
And that concludes that item.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Under Old Business, Wednesday, November 10th at 5:30, we are having our, our annual joint board session with Personnel Commission. And that's where we celebrate our Teacher of the Year. So, we look forward to that. Monday, December 6th at 6:30, we have a joint board meeting with City Council. And it will be held here at the district office. Wednesday, December 8th at 6:30 is our annual organizational meeting and regular Board of Education meeting. Under New Business, Pupil Free Day is coming up on November 1st. Veterans Day, all sites will be closed. That is November 11th. The State of the Schools, as mentioned by Dr. Smith, is November 17th at 6 o'clock. And it will be held out over at our high school auditorium. Thanksgiving break, hard to believe that we're already talking about that, but all sites will be closed November 22nd through the 26th. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Board Member Jennifer Anderson before we recess the Board of Education open session.
Thank you, Board President Travanti. I'm honored to close our meeting tonight in remembrance of my father-in-law Herman Andy Anderson. Born September 16th, 1925, he leaves behind four sons and their wives, two stepdaughters and a stepson-in-law, five grandsons and five granddaughters, three great-grandsons and three great-granddaughters, after dying peacefully on October 26th, 2021. I first met Andy at his third son's wedding, whereupon introducing himself to me, he said, "Don't believe anything my boys tell you about me." My response, "And they said such lovely things about you too," started a wonderful 26 years of banter and what he called joshing. During Andy's 96 years of life, schools and education were at his foundation. Growing up in Yorba Linda on an avocado ranch with his parents, siblings, and grandparents, he lived across the street from Yorba Linda Elementary School, where he attended school. It is now the Richard M. Nixon Presidential Library. After graduating from Fullerton High School, he served as a navigator and bombardier on B-29s in the Air Force for the remainder of World War II. Over the course of his education, he attended colleges and universities, including Fullerton Junior College, the University of Colorado, Whittier College, and Cal State Long Beach, earning a teaching credential, bachelor's degrees in both history and mathematics, and finally, a master's degree in education. He taught school at Acacia Elementary in Yorba Linda, where he married and started a family. Quickly moved on and served as vice principal, then principal at Acacia. Never content to rest on his laurels, he also served as principal at both Ladera Vista Junior High in Fullerton and Imperial Middle School in La Habra. He loved basketball and tennis, which he also coached. While he eventually worked in areas outside of education, his favorite stories to tell were about students and teachers. His face would light up as he would share his memories about his time in education and how he worked to remove barriers for his teachers so that they would have greater opportunities to be creative in their classrooms and allow for, for and support flexibility in education while advocating for equity that was unheard of at the time. After the death of his second wife, he retired as a real estate broker and relocated in order to live with our family. For more than eight years, he was a beloved member of our household, playing cribbage with anyone who was daring enough to take him on, sharing Werther's while watching football, golf, baseball, basketball, tennis, or any other sport he could find in, in the ultimate sports package on television. And there were always M&Ms for my kids if they wanted to just sit down and have a chat with granddad. Andy, it has been a pleasure to be a part of your family. On behalf of the entire Anderson clan, we love you and we miss you greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. And at this time, at 8:48 PM, I'll recess the Board of Education open session and convene the closed session. Thank you and have a good evening.
I'd like to reconvene the regular Board of Education open session and report out. In closed session, the board unanimously appointed Amber Green to the position of High School Assistant Principal. Welcome and congratulations. Also unanimously appointed Laura Ives to the position of Wellness Center Specialist. Congratulations and welcome to the district. This time, I'd like to adjourn the regular Board of Education open session at... Sorry, missed my time.
10:05.
10:05 p.m. Good evening.